Did you, did you go to Jersey Shore? Were you there when Brent Young was there? He would have graduated with me in ninety.
Yeah, I was ninety-one.
Okay.
My wife was ninety.
Okay.
Morning, Kaylin.
Morning.
I got into my truck this morning and I looked all around and I see a like sufficient. I've lost my truck to baseball.
Yeah, that happens.
That happens.
That's why I won't get anything other than a truck.
It's February first.
We can practice in, in, in January.
How old is your kid?
Eleven.
Oh, good God.
January seventh. Oh, no, January third.
You know, you can't, you can't until like April.
I know. We do a winter workout for all the kids just to kind of get in and just that over at Liberty getting some hitting and throwing and.
There's a.
That's what I put the body.
Who's coming down from salary board? Yeah. Who's coming down from salary board?
I guess. The controller.
Can I hear it?
That's hard. Okay.
Okay.
He's just down.
I said, I said to Jamie, if you ask me why we do that, he said. That's what I said.
There be the next one.
I'll be a hunch. I'm surprised you can do it.
It's, it's one of the biggest things that shocked me.
That has, that has surprised me as well.
What's that?
Doing a prayer prayer. I mean, I don't mind it in any way, but look, I was surprised.
He's calling. He called. He really called. Truly pretending from doing it by baseball is school boards.
We asked somebody with us, join us.
Morning, commissioners, it's Kelsey from Planning.
Morning, Kelsey. Okay, it's ten AM. Ask you to please rise for the opening prayer. Pledge allegiance before we convene commissioners' public meeting. Dear gracious and loving God, we thank you for this day. You've granted us, and we take each moment with enthusiasm and strive to be fruitful. Guys, true, out today. For this morning, we remember the five heroes that we've recently lost. The three soldiers and two seals dedicate their lives to service and died protecting our freedoms. We honor them this morning. May you comfort their family and friends as only you can. And we pray for protection, safety for all our military throughout the world. We thank you for each of their lives. And tomorrow, we'll recall an important event that happened during World War Two. Four chaplains day. On that date, four clergymen died rescuing civilian and military personnel as the American ship Dorchester sank. Six hundred and seventy-four were lost at sea and two hundred and thirty survived as a result of their rescue efforts. We remember the four chaplains of different face who acted in heroic fashion, sacrificing their own lives. They stayed calm, assisted frightened personnel, and gave their own life jackets to others in the end. May we always honor those who have laid down their lives for others. And Lord, we ask for your hand to be over our meeting this morning. These things we humbly pray in your name. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is founded, one nation under God, indivisible, liberating, and just as.
Good morning, we'll convene the commissioners' public meeting at this time. And I believe we have some additions, revisions to the agenda, not previously proposed, Director.
Yeah, Commissioner, seeking your approval to add two items to the agenda that were not posted twenty-four hours. We'd like to add item five point five, which is vote to approve resolution twenty, twenty-four dash zero two. If you'll notice there was a type of. Designating Lycoming County Clerk of Courts as a department to collect and disperse court ordered restitution, reparation, fees, costs, fines, penalties. And then secondly, add agenda item five point six, which is vote to approve the amendment to policy one of seven conflict of interest.
Okay, motion acceptors.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
So passing it, and it will be added to the agenda on this day. Okay, do we have any, before we put on a public comment, approval administered at the previous meeting? Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Nice, so carry. Do we need public comment at this time? On agenda items only? You got a line?
No, no line.
Okay, moving on. Report, Kaylin. Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. Presented for your ratification, our invoices due through February seventh, twenty twenty-four, to be paid on January thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, for one million, four hundred and thirty-six thousand, five hundred and eighty-eight dollars and fifty-five cents. The breakdown is as follows, with fifty-four point five-three percent being funded by the general fund at seven hundred and eighty-three thousand, four hundred and forty-two dollars and forty-three cents. Thirty-five point three-four percent is being funded by other grants and pass-through monies at five hundred and seven thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars and forty-four cents. Six point two-two percent is being funded by RMS at eighty-nine thousand, two hundred and eighty-six dollars and twenty-nine cents, and three point nine-one percent is being funded by escrow at fifty-six thousand, one hundred and ninety-two dollars and thirty-nine cents. I do know a very big chunk of that was going to step for pass-through monies, and that was for their programs like Homes and Needs, Urgent Needs program and their supporting housing program.
Thank you. Okay, I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Any questions or comments?
No, Kaylin, I'm not going to put you on the spot this week. I have no questions. Everything looked pretty nice.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay. All fair side?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kaylin.
All right, move on to personnel actions. Commissioners, seeking your approval on the following personnel actions as conditional offers of employment subject to the successful completion of a background check and all other employment conditions as outlined in Attachment A. In assessment, Angelique Walters, Clerk Three, full-time replacement, fifteen forty-five per hour, seventy-five hours per pay period, anticipated start date February five, twenty twenty-four. In the District Attorney's Office, Melanie Smith, Assistant County Detective, part-time replacement, thirty-three eleven per hour, not to exceed one thousand hours annually, anticipated start date February eleven, twenty twenty-four. In the Pre-Release Center, Ruth Kaufman, Resident Supervisor One, part-time replacement, eighteen sixty-four per hour, not to exceed a thousand hours annually, anticipated start date February five, twenty twenty-four. In the prison, Elena Crimes, Licensed Practical Nurse, full-time replacement, thirty dollars per hour, eighty hours per pay period, anticipated start date February nineteen, twenty twenty-four. In the prison, Mel, Melane Johnson, Licensed Practical Nurse, full-time replacement, thirty dollars per hour, eighty hours per pay period, anticipated start date February eleven, twenty twenty-four. In the prison, Alyssa George, Correctional Officer One, full-time replacement, twenty dollars per hour, eighty hours per pay period, anticipated start date February eleven, twenty twenty-four. In Resource Management Services, Jason Levin, Truck Driver, Transfer Station, full-time replacement, twenty sixteen per hour, eighty hours per pay period, anticipated start date February five, twenty twenty-four. A revision to Human Resources, Tatiana Turner, Senior Human Resources Generalist, full-time replacement, twenty forty per hour, seventy-five hours per pay period, anticipated transfer date January twenty eighth, twenty twenty-four. And then lastly, another revision to Human Resources, Karen Stopper, Senior Benefit Specialist, full-time replacement, twenty-five eighteen per hour, seventy-five hours per pay period, anticipated transfer date January twenty eighth, twenty twenty-four.
Motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Any questions or comments on the personnel actions? Carry on, all fair side?
Aye.
Here, Mike Carey, thank you. Okay, at this time, we will recess the commissioners' public meeting for the salary board. Be in the salary board at this time. Morning, Kristen.
Morning. Salary Board, senior approval on the salary board minutes of the previous meeting, January twenty-five, twenty twenty-four.
Okay, motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye. Before we move on, there was a typo in the one eighteen minutes on the action to approve the salary schedule. I typed one seventeen as the effective date. It should have been one seven. Could I have an action to correct that to one seven, please?
I guess, I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Say aye? Salute on the correction.
I will do my best, sir.
All right, four point three, Salary Board, seeking your approval on the following salary board actions as outlined in Attachment B. In the Sheriff's Office, request to add part-time Clerk Three, P Grade Four.
Okay, can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Wait.
Oh, sorry.
The sheriff is here and is a member?
Yes, I would like to, I was going to have a motion, second, and I have a comment.
Well, he gets to make the motion usually. If he'd like.
Would you like to make the motion?
I'm shy, but I'll try.
Oh, my.
You'll make the motion, okay. Can I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Sheriff, would you like to make any comments? Yes, please, come on up. Thank you.
Controller Rogers gave me her time, this is like Congress.
I should have brought my cane to this.
I just want to thank, I want to thank the commissioners for, in this, in this salary board and Controller Rogers for the consideration of the part-time position. We've been able to do, well, Commissioner Metzger's been on board for, you know, for this is fifty years, so he's, we keep him in the loop with our volumes, and we're able to do orientation with Commissioner Musina. We have orientation scheduled for Commissioner Stewart, I think, next, next week, I believe. We started the track with the format that we use, started to track that, and I think, I think Chief Speaker, when he met with you, had that, we're actually starting to track data. We should have done it long ago, but now, now we've got a real good firm position on our data, which quite frankly was shocking. When I think of twenty-ten, when I first got here, and we served two hundred PFAs, we served two hundred PFAs in twenty-ten. And in twenty-twenty-three, we served just under seven hundred. We're already, with January, we're already on a mark that we could approach eight hundred this year with PFAs. We don't see any end in sight, just seems to be, it's every day, the courts now, actually, the courts assign our judges to hear those every day now. It used to be, Scott, when you were in April, two days a week, and it was three days a week, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and now they're actually scheduling the whole week because of the volume that are coming in. And we're getting, at the end of the day, on a typical, a typical Friday, for instance, we're getting ten or twelve a day. So just that number is alarming. The warrant side, where this position is going to help the most, is K. Stry. It's, you know, we had warrants cleaned up from when I first arrived at about twenty-five hundred. We were down about eight hundred. I think we're, I think our, our number is far above that, and we'll get, we'll get warrants, we'll receive warrants, you know, remember, we're getting warrants from five judges, from five trial judges, our complies judges, and we're getting warrants from six MDJs. So we're getting warrants from twelve different courts, sometimes as many as forty a day.
Your chief had explained to us that you have one individual putting that data into the system. So say on Friday, she might get thirty. She has to make sure all that information's in the system so that the week it doesn't go by where somebody's not in the system in case they're picked up on.
Yeah, well, it's, it's a, it's a two-way street. If, if it's, if there's a vacate in the system for Scott Metzger, and we don't get that vacate out, and it's active, and you get picked up on a Saturday, fortunately, you're going to go to call me because you're not getting it. But Mark may never remember my number. Oh, I got it. So that's, that's the other side of the coin, but the side you talk about is the warrant that doesn't get entered, and it gets picked up by law enforcement, serious warrant, and the prison has no record of the information. Then we've got to do a paper trail. We've got to, you know, we have all call deputies to cover that. We've got to come in, we've got to pull data, we've got to, we've got to do an override, in essence, with the prison to be able to get that clear. So that is really important, that we don't put someone in who shouldn't go in, or don't keep someone in, don't put you in when you don't belong in, because obviously, that creates a liability for us. And it's, it, people don't respond, they don't respond to, to the paper they get from the courts, or they ignore it, and then they get hunted down, and it just is a, a bit of a circle. And that's with the constable group, even with the constable group working the MBJ warrants like they do, and that's, that's what works out, is it's really, really challenging. And then our staff, our deputy group, will work to comply with warrants, especially the high-profile ones that are higher risk, higher-risk ones we assign to, to the deputy group. On the, quickly, on the LTC side, it's a different world today. I was, I just had lunch with Sheriff Brewer, and we had, his last year, we had about, he had about two thousand LTCs a year, and it's a five-year.
Play what a LTC is.
Okay, LTC is, you would call it a gun permit. A lot of people still call it a gun permit. In twenty-eleven, the statute changed, it became licensed to carry. It's the same thing, it's just automated. We've run an automated card, rather than no paper, the new paper permit. Two thousand and nine, Sheriff Brewer would have issued about two thousand a year, which would have been an aggregate of ten thousand for the five-year period. We have issued in Lycoming County, and think about our population, how many adults we have over twenty-one. We are issuing just under, about just over four thousand a year, forty-five hundred a year, which puts us at about twenty, twenty-five thousand licensed to carries. And we are really busy on licensed to carries now. So the fact that you give us the part-time position really helps us, helps us, because every clerk is, every clerk is just in, you, you guys have been in, they're just non-stop. The one other piece of data that's just shocking to everyone I talk to, we received in twenty-twenty-three, I believe, almost sixty-five thousand incoming calls and into our office. And when you take all that and put it all together, this part-time position helps us. And the part-time position, I won't give the details, but you all know about the part-time position, K. is back today, so.
I was understanding this was a position, it's not a brand-new part-time position, a position that was created sometime ago.
Correct.
That went away, and now it's going.
Correct. We had it and we used it, and then because we hadn't used it for about a year, year and a half, it went away. So we just asked you to re-see it. So I want to thank, I want to thank you all, and thank Kristen.
Actually, could I ask you a question for you?
Sharon, wait.
And this doesn't have anything to do with the position, wait. You ran off the statistics about the PFAs, and it was two hundred and some in twenty-ten when you started, and now we're over seven hundred.
Well, we're, we're probably, I'll give you the number. We were at the end, end of the year, the date for twenty-twenty-three, we were at, I'm going to find my head a little. We were at six hundred and fifty-three from, for this past year compared to the two hundred my first year.
Okay, so it's basically tripled.
Correct.
Ballpark.
Correct.
So the, the reasons for that are either A, society is more violent, B, it's just as violent, but people are reporting it more, or C, people are abusing the system.
Include D, because it'd be all of them.
Okay.
All right, counsel? It is, it's all of them. It's, it's dysfunctional families, it's a whole number, a whole gamut of issues. It's, it's, it's girls having, you know, families, younger and younger, young adults, juveniles having families. I, I heard a call just the other day, someplace in, in the county, there was a, there was a fight between a boyfriend and a girlfriend, and it was called a domestic disturbance, and he threw food at her. Just a little, just a little kind of example, but it's the dysfunction. And what we have more of now is, Harry, I like this. Chris and I are married. She files against me. Well, now I'm going to file against her. And then she counterfiles a custody issue, a custody, and then I file a counter custody. Now we have in court four proceedings involving.
One issue.
Involving one issue, which is four separate dockets and four, four of everything that we have to do to process it. It's, it's the way society has become. Society doesn't, doesn't seem to be as able today to fix the problems, to, to live as a family and have a good family structure. We don't have, in many ways, a good family structure.
Is there, I hope, like, is there, is there anything we're doing to curtail this?
I think there's a lot of programs that help us to do that. I think the Commissioners Board have helped with a lot of programs to, to lessen the stress, to lessen the inability to buy property or inability to rent. They're the kind of programs that really, really help, that, that provide the ability to, to function, you know, and not have the anger that goes with not having money, the anger with having, with having children that they, that you can't take care of. Without having just anger that, that people have, young people have today, who just turn to the system to fix, to fix their domestic issues. And I think we see more and more of that, law enforcement, more and more and more and more, and it's all history years. We become a social, a social entity within the criminal justice structure. We aren't designed to be social, you know, the social workers. We don't have that capability, have that training, have the, or have the time to do it. But, but we have to, I mean, we have to in some ways do it. We, we're seeing, we're seeing a lot more, a lot more, just a lot more, more violence in many ways. I think we have ten or eleven pending murder trials today, and I think we have about five pending attempted murder trials today without all the other work that we get. A lot more out-of-county PFAs, a lot more, we're sending more out-of-county, we're sending more to the Philadelphia area and other parts of the state, and we're getting a lot more from out-of-county into the county to serve. The totality of all that just makes it very, very, very busy. Our deputies run, they run hard, you know, they're, they're, they're working court most of the day, and a lot of these, a lot of what we do with, with PFAs have to be done when they're done with court. We get them out as fast as we can. We track the court, the court helps us track them as we're coming in. We'll, we'll track the PFA from the minute it gets to wise options. We'll know it's coming, we'll know they're coming. It's just a matter of how fast they get into court that day and how fast we can get, we can get the paperwork. But I think, I think A, B, C, D, I think D is the answer of all the above.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sheriff, I, I got a couple of comments. So one is, I agree with you a hundred percent, it's, it's D. And I don't want to get into a, a big political discussion of where the problem is. But, you know, being new, sitting here for, for a month, and I'm, and I'm reading reports about our juveniles with, their crimes are, are more violent.
Correct.
Hearing what you're saying, the crimes are more violent. But we, we sit right here in our own county with a PFA against a gentleman that, that allegedly was way too close, obviously.
Correct.
Throwing money at these programs is not working. That's, that's my soapbox that I'm going to say, and I'm going to just stop right there. But throwing money at these programs is not working. The programs need fixed. That's that part. As, as for Lycoming County and the Sheriff's Department, I mean, I just want to thank you and your department. I don't think the average resident realizes how much your department's doing and how much the crime has increased within our own county. So I appreciate what you guys have done and what you continue to do. I was shocked by reading the numbers from your deputy on Monday.
The chief brought in, I think, about six categories?
Correct, it said, yeah, correct.
And, and the numbers are staggering.
We, we still continue, you know, when we talk about taking care of our own, we still continue to provide a lot of behind-the-scenes services as far as protection for the, for county government, for local government. You know, there are times we'll get requests to go to a municipal meeting, and we work out a, a plan, you know, ask a little bit of compensation back, but we get a lot more than that. We have a lot of activity with social media and, and email. The communication situation is incredible with some of the contact our judges get, some of the contacts that our public officials get, and we follow up on every one of those and do threat assessments on everything that comes in, and it just, it's non-stop. And we appreciate your support, and we'll continue to do as much as we can do and make Lycoming County as safe as we can. So thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
I'll just, when you talk about programs, put a plug in for the fact that we don't have volunteers like we used to in so many programs, and NAMI is out there, and mental health is a huge issue. And when you talk, my daughter's in a criminal justice class in high school and just was talking about a law that was passed in Florida that you can't be on social media if you're sixteen. But I don't know that that's the answer either, because how do you monitor that? Are you going to put a sixteen-year-old in jail if they're on social media? But we need volunteers, and we need to have that conversation as well, because your programs aren't going to be fixed by throwing money at them, but we need people that are willing to put time in, in the social arenas, to volunteer their time to bring those programs along as well.
I've often said, Chris.
My soapbox is always.
I've often said it'd be, it'd be nice if the, if the schools would have a program where the kids could volunteer and get credit for it as a class.
Yeah.
And they could choose their own agency to volunteer. I think that they'd be more engaged in their community, they might.
Well, they do have, believe it or not, Leo.
Yeah.
In Key Club.
Right, those kind of organizations.
And they get those credits towards National Honor Society. So there is encouragement for kids to volunteer, but I don't think necessarily enough. And there's not enough if a child or a family is not engaged enough to get the kid involved. So.
I truly believe it'd be very beneficial. You know, the student would learn friendships, develop friendships, and then maybe when they move, if they decide to move, if they're working for the Red Cross, it goes with them. They might someday become a volunteer for the Red Cross or whatever agency it is.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Start those roots earlier.
We need more volunteers.
Agreed.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second?
All in favor?
All in favor, say aye?
Aye. Are you in favor?
Oh, aye.
So, Carey, thank you. Okay, next one.
Yep. Cooperative Extension, request to approve the following employees for long-term five percent override for vacancy coverage for, for each instructional responsibility. Andrea McKesey and Mackenzie and Barbara Nambro.
Motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, thank you, Kristen.
Thank you.
Okay, we will return to salary board this time, and we convene the commissioners' public meeting. We'll act my.
Five point one, Kate.
Good morning. I'm seeking approval for our twenty-twenty-four agreement with forensic pathology associates. So they're out of Allentown, this is where we do all of our autopsies, as well as our blood toxicology panels.
Okay, motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
And this is a twenty-twenty-four budget item, as noted. All fair side?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Five point two, Kelsey.
Morning, Kelsey.
Good morning, commissioners. So today, I have for your approval of subrecipient agreement with American River for twenty-twenty-one mitigation assistance fund.
Okay, I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
So, Carey, thank you. Thank you, Kelsey.
Thank you.
Five point three, Malik, subrecipient agreement.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning, Malik.
Senior approval for amendment to subrecipient agreement with Jersey Shore Borough through the Act thirteen. the Act 13 Legacy Funds. This is an extension until December of 2024. Project construction will begin in April and anticipated completion is in November of 2024.
And this is for one of the inclusive playgrounds, these projects?
Yes.
Wonderful. Okay, a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
So carried, thank you, thank you, Malik.
Thank you.
5.4, Jason, AC drive.
Morning, commissioners.
Morning, Jason.
Morning, Director.
Small note, though, the number that's on your 5.4, we have that should be at $12,374. $12,374 and 47 cents.
Repeat that?
$12,374 and 47 cents. And that is, commissioners, that is with the shader, yes, because these are, these are, simply, we purchase drives, AC drives that go in the single-stream system, our drives, the system is going on 10 years old this year, so we will be doing more of this. We look at rebuilding them versus buying them, the buys 1,900, the rebuilds, most 1,200. So we're, we're gonna get some new ones and try to start, well, we have been, our teams have been doing maintenance on them all along, but 10 years is the longest time on a lot of drives like that, so.
You meant 19,000 versus 12,000?
Well, no, per unit, sir.
Oh, okay.
If you look at the PO request, per unit is like, the one is like 1,974.
Okay, I see.
Yeah, so.
Do we need to make a motion to adjust that on the agenda first?
Please.
Okay, so I have a motion to make the correction on, actually, item 5.4, to be the amount of $12,374 and 47 cents.
You make the motion.
Can I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, have a second.
I'll second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
So that's amended. Okay, then can I have a motion to accept it?
I'll make a motion to accept.
Have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, to accept it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the correction, too.
All right, 5.5, Commissioners seeking your approval on Resolution 2024-02, designating the Lycoming County Clerk of Courts as the department to collect and disperse court-ordered restitution, reparation fees, costs, fines, and penalties.
Okay, let me just read the resolution. Thank you.
Commissioner, you said 02, it's printed 01?
Yeah, that's incorrect.
Oh, it is 02?
Yeah, I, I.
Yeah.
Sorry, I missed that.
Okay.
All right, Resolution to appoint agent to collect court-ordered restitution, reparation fees, costs, fines, and penalties in accordance with PA Code 9728. Resolution 2024-02, Lycoming County Board of Commissioners authorize resolution to appoint Clerk of Courts as agent to collect court-ordered restitution, reparation fees, costs, fines, in accordance with PA Code 9728. Whereas, the Lycoming County Commissioners, with the approval of the President Judge of the Lycoming County Court of Common Pleas, is authorized pursuant to 42 PA Code 9728, A1, to designate an agent for the collection of court-ordered restitution, reparation fees, costs, fines, and penalties. And whereas, the Lycoming County Commissioners had previously designated the Central Collections Office as the designated agent of the county to collect and disperse court-ordered restitution, reparation, fees, costs, fines, and penalties in accordance with 42 PA Code 9728. And whereas, the Central Collections Office has since ceased to operate as a department within Lycoming County. And whereas, the Lycoming County Commissioners, with the approval of the President Judge of the Lycoming County Court of Common Pleas, desire to designate the Lycoming County Clerk of Courts as the department, the department to be designated, the designated agent to collect and disperse court-ordered restitution, reparation, fees, costs, fines, and penalties in accordance with 42 PA Code 9728. And now therefore, be it resolved by the Lycoming County Board of Commissioners, that the Lycoming County Clerk of Courts is hereby designated as the agent of Lycoming County to collect and disperse court-ordered restitution, reparation, fees, costs, fines, and penalties in accordance with 42 PA Code 9728. Be it further resolved that the Lycoming County Treasurer is hereby authorized to take any and all action necessary to add the Lycoming County Clerk of Courts as an authorized user, agent on all accounts that are currently filed, currently utilized for the collection and dispersment of court-ordered restitution, reparation, fees, costs, fines, and penalties in accordance with 42 PA Code 9728, consistent with this resolution. Be it further resolved that all prior resolutions or portions thereof which are inconsistent here within, herewith, are hereby repealed. This resolution shall take effect immediately, duly adopted, this first day of February 2024. Sign the Board of Lycoming County Commissioners, Scott Almesker, Chairman, Horst Seesortman, Vice Chairman, Mark Musina, Secretary.
Okay, can I have a motion to adopt your resolution and approve it?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. Questions or comments? Mr. Heath, would you like to make any comments?
Would you like me to, sir?
If you'd like to. Address why this is necessary?
Huh? Sorry?
Could you please address why this is necessary?
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
As Mr. Kenyon has eloquently put it in resolution here, clearly, it's a, a question of the rule. So there was some discussion, when I was elected as the Patonitary Clerk of Courts, my recommendation to the Commissioners at the time was to disband the Central Collections Office. I retained the responsibilities as the Clerk of Courts to collect cost, fines, and restitutions. This formalizes it and memorializes, we went back in the mid-'80s when Judge Rout established the reason for this, we could find no memorandum of understanding on, although I've known in my 32 years, I've seen it, but we, nobody could locate it, so Judge Butts has prepared an administrative order to slap on top of this resolution to get it memorialized into my office as a patonitary. It is a lot of responsibility. We do about 35,000 receipts a year for criminal costs and fines, disperse about $6.5 million, issued about 7,000 dispersment checks last year, that when the state comes in to check my records and the books that I've been doing since 1996, that they're here for four or five months. So it's a very detailed audit, just makes sense, just to, just to appoint and get it on record.
Any questions or comments?
5.6.
Wait, hold on a minute.
Sorry.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye? So carried, by carry, thank you.
It was all the restitution's refereeing.
I did that on purpose, Steve.
It was like a tongue. Now, 5.6, Commissioners seeking your approval on the Amendment to U Policy 107 Complex of Interests. Can you final legal review?
May I have a motion?
Uh, yeah, I'll make a motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor, aye? Aye? Hereby carried.
All right, Commissioner, comment?
Anything?
Oh, yeah, if I, if I can go first.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, one, one month in, so really, all I'd like to say is thank you, not only to the residents for their trust that they put me here in this seat to, to help move the county forward, but also a big thank you to, I've, I've met a lot of people, I have to meet a lot more. So those of you who I've not seen in this first month, I apologize, I will get around to meet you, just give me a little bit of time, they got me in a lot of meetings, meeting a lot of people. But I appreciate everybody that I've met and the, the learning experience that I've had so far of each individual departments I've met with, and I look forward to a successful four years of, of helping the employees of the county move forward as well in each of their positions and, and look forward to working with everybody, and thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, just kind of to echo what Mark just said. You know, coming into the process, Scott and I have been friends for 20 years, I never met Mark until we started campaigning, and I, I just think we're really, we're a good group. If you've ever been on a committee, you need to be able to work together, and, you know, regardless of what side of the aisle we're on, I think Mark and I especially have, have very similar leadership styles, support and camaraderie, and I, I think we have a good group going forward, and I'm, I'm excited about the next four years. And I also wanted to say, as, as Mark had said earlier about, I'm just throwing money at problems, I don't mean to speak for him, he's not saying, you know, there are good programs out there, but we've seen sometimes with COVID money, at times the government just throws money and, just to kind of make themselves feel good that we're trying, and we need to be smarter about where we spend the money and analyze the programs and make sure that we're doing well with it, just not making it look good on paper that we're trying, because, you know, obviously governmental waste is one of the things that, that we're, you know, everyone's trying to do better with, and there are good programs and we need good programs, and we need to make sure that we're supporting the right ones and we're helping the right ones that actually make a difference.
Okay, thank you. Love the comment. Yes, sir, please come up and introduce yourselves, and please ask you to keep it to a limited amount of time and, and county issues, please. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners, my name is Bruce Clark, I live in Muncie Borough. I've been doing some research and I understand the economic times that we are currently in, and as Commissioner Musina just said, we need to be economically and fiscally responsible. Well, my suggestion to the county is consolidate all these small borough police departments. If you think about it, how much money could actually be saved, we're literally talking millions of dollars. Through my research, it's my understanding that there are currently eight. Well, if each one of those is putting out $100,000 between salary and benefits to those chiefs of police, that's $800,000. If you, you know, consolidate that one into a county-wide police department, write, write that in there, let's say, that, you know, that commissioner that you hire, he gets, receives a total of $150,000 in pay and benefits. There's a $650,000 saving in one year, right there. Plus, on top of it, if you have a county-wide police department, let's say there's something going on in Montoursville, they need backup, they don't have to, as a county police officer, they could call Loyal SOC, hey, we got this going on, we need backup. Bam, no questions asked. And I know Commissioner Sortman has, has some, you know, experience in this area, when he worked with South Williamsport and Loyal SOC, you know, their fire departments to maintain coverage, so both of those municipalities could, you know, actually have coverage 24/7/365. We need to seriously look into this, I know it's been batted around for years, but now is the time to actually, hey, this is something we need to do. And I know, you know, people's egos are, egos are gonna get, you know, hurt, and they're gonna say, no, it's us, well, we've got to think of what's best for this county. And I would have, you know, appreciated if you would do this. My suggestion, if we can get cooperation from the actual boroughs to just put it out a referendum for the people, let the people make the choice, because a lot of times, I don't feel like I have a choice. Our elected officials say, well, this is what we're gonna do, and be done with it. Like it or lump it, this is it. But no, if, if, you know, the municipalities don't want to cooperate, I'm sure the people will do that. Thank you for your time, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Anybody online?
Nothing online.
Okay, we've completed our agenda, so our meeting will be adjourned, our next meeting will be on Thursday, February 8, 2024, 10:00 a.m., right here in this meeting room.
We don't get past it tomorrow.
We may never get to the 7th, maybe the 2nd.
Yeah, that was a funny movie.
You know, I'm gonna talk to like a night.
Play my radio, trying to listen to this.